But there's been a couple of emails where people that had their kids in fully remote the whole year, that the summer program might be a good way to get back into the swing of being in a school building and with other kids, no matter how much they learned in the remote, and it's a good program. There's the, you know, using the mask, but also just playing, I haven't been in school for a year, and at that age, now it's a big deal going back. So the summer might be a really useful time for making that transition.
Yeah, absolutely. Others? Does anybody have anything? I think this is an exciting option we're offering.
Thank you. And Corey's going to talk about the TRS plan.
Thank you. So in mid-February, right around the time that we had the February committee meeting, TRS announced a new supplemental plan that covered all their employees under that plan, to be able to contribute to it. So the surprising part of it was that they came out initially and said that every school district was required to participate, and we had to have board approved participation by the end of March 2021. If anybody knows how things typically work, that is an extremely quick timeline. It was met with SWIFT and a lot of pushback and a lot of questions from school districts, probably way more questions than we got answers. And within a matter of a week or two, they softened their tone to ultimately, by the early part of March, changing it to kind of an optional, or we'll wait and see, not realizing that the impact this would have. One of the interesting things, at least from my perspective, is that the only provide, there's only going to be one provider offered by the state, and it'd be Voya. It's a, it's supposed to be set up similar to like a 457B. My first reaction when I read the bulletin was, at least as it relates to District 39, is this is a solution to something that wasn't a problem to start with. And just for reference, we have, under 403B, we have 10 potential providers that people can choose from. 457B, we have three. Roth 403B, we have four. And Roth 457B, we have three as well. So I know, I realize not every district probably offers that many, but it's one of those things we'll continue to monitor as we get more information, and something we'll probably be bringing back to the board for discussion later in the spring or summer. Is there any questions?
So it's not a problem for us because we already have something like this? But I think that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I kind of feel like, the more I thought about it, it, you know, since this was a legislative mandate to TRS, it probably came from good intentions. I mean, I don't know, out of the 800 and some school districts, there's probably some that don't have 403B or 57. So I'm sure there was good intentions, but for them to, you know, universally mandate that everybody needs to do it, I think that was a big reason for such strong pushback from school districts. So, so, anything else?
Yeah, Frank?
Yeah, just, because the next level of detail, real quick. Is there, so there's no difference in like contribution limits from the plans that we have now in this? Sounds like it, plans we have now are more flexible. They're not excluding the plans that we have now by adding this. And is there any additional cost of adding this? I guess if it's a mandate, it's, that's...
So the, the way that thing, the way it's structured is that there's supposed to be no cost to any of the school districts or TRS. It's supposed to be borne by the employees that are participating in this program. Probably the one thing from our perspective would be, we pay TSA Consulting to manage all those 403B and 457 providers, and to make sure we're in compliance, and to make sure that nobody exceeds their limits, and to kind of keep an eye on that. And if we were to do this, that would kind of shift the focus back to us, because TSA would have no, no control over what's going on in the TRS program. So that's another, was another pushback from a lot of districts. But yeah, there shouldn't be any, any direct cost to District 39.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Corey. Turn it back over to you.
Thanks.
Presenting things.
Surreal. Next, we have Strategy Committee items. I turn the meeting over to Strategy Chair, Mark Dean.
Thank you very much. And our first item is on fourth quarter planning for the fifth through eighth grades, a very interesting and relevant topic right now. And Dr. Kremis Goli, I think you'll probably take this.
Thank you. I will kick it off, and I know that our administrator for fifth through eighth grades and principal at High Crest Middle School is here, Kelly Jackson, to provide the board with a presentation. Last month, the Board of Education asked our administrative team to evaluate programming options that might allow us to merge the A and B in-person learning pods at High Crest Middle School and WJHS. Understanding that this merger would require reduced distancing within a classroom to about four feet, the board asked that we review our layered mitigation plan, as well as the CDC and IDPH guidance to evaluate our ability to maintain safety and healthy classrooms, classroom environments, despite reducing that distancing. At the time, we did not expect that IDPH was going to come out with some revised guidance. We're thankful for that. Just prior to that revision, we did receive word back from IDPH approving, essentially saying that we had a really strong layered mitigation plan, even with reducing distancing down to four feet. So we received that positive feedback from IDPH on our own plans. And then soon thereafter, IDPH came out with some updated mitigation, sorry, guidance, that we have also taken the time to evaluate. We have spent the last several weeks developing and evaluating the program, and we are very eager to present the board with an update for feedback in your consideration. With the board's review and direction, we are very hopeful that we can bring back a final plan to the board for action at the March 22th Board of Education meeting. You'll see, as Kelly walks through the presentation, there has been a ton of work put into this. We designed our program right from the start of the school year to be flexible and to be able to pivot, as, as we learned more about this virus and about safe school settings, despite the pandemic. And so I think we had set ourselves up really well for this pivot, but it still took quite a bit of work to work through the nuances of the schedule. And Kelly has done a tremendous job in doing that. So we're, we're hopeful we can provide you with a overview of what that will look like for our students and for our staff at High Crest and at WJHS, and also answer questions so that we can bring back the plan next week. Kelly?
Hi, everybody. All right. So I will project some of the screen, or I'm sharing my screen. I will project some of the slides, just to kind of walk you through what the the plan looks like. But just recently, we know that we can provide four feet of distancing within merged classrooms. And we also know that at this point, or by spring break, which is the signal of fourth quarter, more than 92% of District 39 staff will be fully vaccinated, meaning that they've had that two weeks after their last vaccination. We also, just as Carrie mentioned, received the IDPH guidance updates, which, just briefly, a couple of the high points were minimal of three to six feet distance in classrooms. Symptom checks onsite are no longer recommended, and a removal of the 50-person room capacity, as long as you're still six feet apart. With all of those changes, we are still planning, or our plan centers around mitigation still in place. So self-certification, cleaning and sanitation daily and during the day, distancing where possible, minimum of three feet, according to the guidance. Unvaccinated staff still needs to stay at six feet, required mask wearing and PPE, required masking on buses, hand washing, quarantining, et cetera. All of these are the same things that we've had in place and been working through for the last eight months. The option of remote instruction for families is still an option that we plan to keep in place as well. So thinking about all those mitigation layers, and thinking about the schedule that we currently have in place for hybrid learning, we wanted to plan this schedule, keeping several things in mind. So maintaining consistency with core instruction, with lunchtimes, start and end times, keeping our basic schedule in place was really important to us. Making sure kids had academic strategies daily, and that student and teacher class assignments were maintained. We, as you know, we put a lot of emphasis this year on community building in our rooms. This, if we merge the pods, if you will, that will give us another opportunity for further community building. But adding to and changing that, and kind of blowing up our schedule, would severely decrease the amount of community building that we would be able to have. We also wanted to offer opportunities for in-person creative arts, world language, and PE. We've been having in-person PE. World language, because of the mixing, was a little bit more difficult. And at the junior high, they've had in-person creative arts. At High Crest, we have not. So offering some more opportunities there. Keeping our class sizes smaller, allowing for movement breaks, and again, the fully remote program remains intact. So with all those things in mind, we were able to develop a schedule where core classes will meet daily and stay at the same time each day. Alternating, there will be alternating periods for world language and PE. So in brief, there's a two-day schedule. So at High Crest, it's a blue day and a gold day. At the junior high, it's blue and white, school colors. And so it alternates for world language, creative arts, and PE by day. So second period, a given student may have in-person world language on a blue day, and then they would have in-person PE on a gold day. They would then have asynchronous PE on a blue day, and asynchronous world language on a gold day. So you're getting your classes every day, it just alternates still between the in-person and the asynchronous. Creative arts runs very similar. They have a dedicated creative arts period. So it's a little bit different than world language and PE kind of partner together in the schedule. So this would be a sample student schedule, and this is just kind of how I explained. But you can see the blue blocks there are what alternates on a blue day to a gold day. So you have a world language in person, third period, you have PE in person, third period. On the gold day, you have your synchronous and asynchronous creative arts, and you have your asynchronous PE and asynchronous world language during that period. For, from a teacher perspective, the teachers, core teachers, continue to have their same planning periods, they continue to have their same instructional periods, and they continue to travel from room to room. So students still stay in their general homeroom for their core classes, and the teachers come to them. That's the, the process that we're using currently.
Kelly, could I just step in really quick? So as we're doing scheduling, students will stay with the same teacher and the same cohort that they've had throughout. So my math teacher would stay the same, and I'd be with the same peers.
Yes. Yeah. A little bit of difference for creative arts, world language, and PE. As they alternate in their in-person day, currently, they've taken an A group and a B group, and that's how we've divided it up. Now, they will only have, they will have homeroom groups. So they'll be able to alternate and still keep their group sizes small. That's how, why we had to do the two-day schedule. They continue to have their planning periods. Creative arts and world language teachers will have a dedicated teaching space that will allow for distancing. World language, we have been able to get in-person instruction for world language with this schedule. There is some mixing of the pods for that, but we have done mixing for other classes with great success, and we still will be able to distance the students. So we have mixed all year for classes like accelerated math, or for some of our instructional classes, academic strategies classes, and what have you. And we haven't had any serious issues, as long as the kids are maintaining distance and are masked up. So we continue, we plan on that being, continuing to be successful. Lunch and plan periods would continue at the same time for creative arts, world language, and PE teachers. And then one slight difference for our world language teachers, in order to accommodate our remote students, in, right now, how they are teaching is they're zooming, and they have a mix of remote students and in-person students at the same time. So what we've done is, we've looked at our rosters, we've pulled the remote students out and moved them to eighth or ninth period. So then the remote students would have a dedicated world language teacher, where the world language teacher is still interacting with them on a daily basis, but just so they're not having to zoom them in while they're in-person learning. So it makes it a lot nicer of a split, and it makes it actually nice for the remote students, too, to get that dedicated attention from the world language teacher. Instrumental music, we've been very successful having in-person morning rehearsals. Those will continue in their smaller groups, in, where we can get a few more students in. We will do so with distancing, but they will continue to have their PPE. Technique classes will move from being remotely held to in-person, and those are small groups as it is. So it, all of our expectations continue with instrumental music. It's been very successful with the PPE that we've had, and offered a great opportunity for the kids. Student services, currently, we're working through our academic strategies classes. The GLADS are working with LBSs to plan those. Our peer professional schedule will adjust, and hopefully be more consistent as a result of this. And we'll continue to work through some of the schedule changes with our other student services providers. As I mentioned before, the impact for our remote team, so we have a team at each grade level, basically, for our remote learners. The world language period moves to eighth or ninth, and then PE, instead of alternating with world language, will be a dedicated period for PE and a dedicated period for creative arts. Their both schedule will continue to align with our in-person instruction, and class assignments would stay the same. We are looking at some opportunities for some optional in-person connections, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Lunch is a big question. How are you going to do lunch with twice the number of students in the classroom? And so we are looking, looking at lunch shifts in the past at High Crest, and even at the junior high, and a few years ago, we would have half the group eat inside, and half the group goes outside for recess, and then they flip. So that's what we're looking at doing. Continuing to eat in the classroom, but socially distanced, with masks off, with their shields up still. And then it would be half the group for the first 20 minutes, then they'd go outside, and the group outside would come in. So we're working on zones and, and places to go for all of those students. Certainly, if the weather's nice, everybody can go outside and eat. And I think a lot of us would prefer that anyway. It's just a nice break. And, and all the students, I think, some of the students that are, we've talked to, are looking forward to eating with some of their other group classmates. So I think that would be a great opportunity. We're continuing to review and finalize protocols with that, and look at supervision and how all of that works. But that's our general plan for right now. Entrance and exit, again, stays basically the same. We will look at allowing kids in a little bit later. We haven't made the determination on temperature checks, while it's not recommended anymore from the, the new IDPH guidelines. It's up to the school district to decide that, but we will still do self-certification. So we'll have to collect those slips still at the door. But we, we know that many students arrive early, and then they come in, and then they're sitting on their hawk for quite a few minutes before school starts. And so we'll allow them to stay outside, especially with the better weather, and it allows for more distancing that way, too. So we'll let them in a little bit later. Classroom arrangements, again, we have measured out all of our classrooms. We have classroom arrangements. We have options. The CDC came out with some cluster options. So we've measured those out for teachers. We've measured desks, lots of measuring. It's an important unit in elementary school. But anyway, so we, we are working with that, and we will be working with teachers to make sure that they have enough desks, and that they're placed in the right areas in their classrooms as we get closer. And then, just what happens with quarantine. So it's important to know that right now, if one student is quarantined, they're missing two days of in-person instruction to four days of in-person instruction, depending on when that happens. So this would mean that if a student, one student is on quarantine, it would be treated as an absence. So it would be similar to if you had the flu for a week, or if you had something going on like that, where the teacher would work to make sure that there was some assignments. Students on the 5A campus check Schoology pretty regularly. There's usually a missing work folder. And then they would catch them up on the backside of that, and make sure that they're all caught up with their instruction. If, if a class was exposed, or if they were deemed close contacts, then we would most likely quarantine that entire class. And then the teacher would have remote instruction for the entire class for that period of time. And then if, if a teacher is exposed, there may not need to be a quarantine if they are fully vaccinated. So that was according to the, the new guidance that came out. Few things we have currently under discussion. So I said that the schedule was, in our plan, is staying the same. However, we've gotten a little bit of feedback from teachers, and just in our discussions, too, just the passing periods are really short right now, and with some kids moving to world language, creative arts, a little bit more often, and a few more kids, maybe we need to lengthen those passing periods, or add some in around lunch, too. So that's why that lunch periods is on there. And then the homeroom length would be where we'd kind of look at that. We have kind of a five-minute-ish flexible period there in, in homeroom. Fourth quarter calendar. So when do we make this happen, right? So our first day of fourth quarter is the 5th of April, which is the day after spring break. If you want a shock to the system, we'll bring them all back on that day. But I, I think we're kind of wanting to be cognizant of the need for planning for a lot of our teachers to transition to this type of instruction, back to kind of some of the normal type of instruction, but then also for our creative arts, world language, and PE teachers. It's a little bit different than it has been. And then, you know, we also want to be sure to allocate time to help the kids understand what's going to be changing, how they understand their schedule, and that sort of thing. So trying to think about, how do we gradually transition in? And, and while we're doing that, looking at opportunities for in-person connections for our, our fully remote students, that is currently under discussion as well. So we're talking about perhaps surveying families of our remote program students, kind of where they are at with this, to see what their feelings are around this. How do they feel about, would they be wanting to participate in some optional in-person connections? Especially, we think, you know, for that, the socialization of, of students who, many of whom have been not in school buildings, or at home for the majority of the year, how do we get them to see their classmates and even their teachers? So are there some opportunities? And, and where, how do we staff that? And what spaces do we have available? So that's what we're looking at right now, and I think that's going to be a big discussion in the next week, probably. So that's my presentation. I'm happy to have Carrie add on to it, or if there's any questions.
Thank you, Kelly. I think that was a really well-done overview of the adjustments. And I know that from people who work outside of schools, this seems like we should just be able to make it happen really quickly. And actually, there are so many nuances to operating a school now in the pandemic, and at the same time honoring our commitments to maintaining cohorts in school communities, classroom communities, limiting the, the number of transitions for our students, and of course, keeping our focus always on instructional teaching and learning for our students. We are really proud of this plan, and we think that it will be an easy, relatively easy transition for our students and for our staff. We've had some conversations with our union leaders, who also have expressed support for this, this plan overall. As we look to make this move, it will be a huge adjustment, and so we will need some time to manage that. So we're really glad to have that time working through that at this point. We would recommend, Kelly kind of hinted at the transition. I think we are looking at that first week after spring break, continuing with a hybrid approach. We'd like to have that Monday, I think it's April 5th, Kelly, am I right? Have that be a planning day for our teachers, which would be a non-attendance day for our students. And then the 6th through the 9th, so the rest of that week, would be the last hybrid approach to our in-person model at the 5A campus. And then we would launch on April 12th with our in-person model at the 5A campus. We think this allows our teachers the planned time that they need to make this adjustment, while also supporting our students and our community as they plan for this adjustment as well. There's really several benefits to that April 5th being a planning day. But in, in particular, as we look to make this relatively significant adjustment at our 5A campus, we want to make sure that our teachers are well-supported through that. So we are hopeful we can, we can do that. And the other thing that Kelly mentioned, and we'll continue to talk about, is the options for our fully remote team. As we think about what's best for teaching and learning, upending that program completely does not seem like it would be in the best interest of our students at this point. We want them to continue to maintain and receive the high-quality instruction that they have been provided throughout the school year. We also feel a commitment to those who have made a commitment to that program, to continue with that program, and make sure that that option is available without deteriorating it. That said, we do want to see some opportunities to bring in our fully remote students. And so what we ultimately hope to do is to, as Kelly said, survey our families and see what interest there might be in coming in, what programs might be of greatest interest to them, recognizing that instructionally, we want them to have consistency in their programming, but we also want to provide some opportunities for them to connect with their class, and, and possibly with their teacher, their staff members, in an in-person way. Again, it, it is a balancing act, because there are many families who may wish to just remain fully remote through the end of this school year, and we want to be respectful of that as well. So there's a lot to explore there, but we do want to be as supportive as we can of that. We do recognize that there are a few who have some extenuating circumstances who may need special consideration as well. And so our principals have done an outstanding job of reviewing those unique needs throughout the school year, and are committed to continuing to do so, if there are some extenuating circumstances that may cause an in-person student to need to shift programs or in the other direction.
Have questions?
I've got a couple. One that's really just easy, but I couldn't understand. So in this world of asynchronous and synchronous gym, how do you do asynchronous gym when you're in school?
Yeah, so I failed to mention that we also have, from 6th through 8th grade, we have health. That is a part of our PE program. So on, most of those days, they would be doing asynchronous health assignments. Those have typically gone out on Mondays for our kids, so now we would split them up during the week. We actually were talking with the PE group on Friday about some options for asynchronous gym. And so it's not, it wouldn't necessarily be asynchronous in the, in the idea that they're sitting behind a computer doing something that way, because they would be in class, right? And so there may be a day where the PE teachers say, our ninth-period supervisors are taking all the PE kids outside today, and they, they walk, or go outside and play on the basketball courts, or something like that. So there may be, they're just directing what the activity might be, and it, it may not be live with their PE teacher. We have supervisors, eighth and ninth periods, during those periods, that may have some plans in place to help get the kids active. It could be putting on a, even a video, and doing some stretching, or doing some yoga, kind of in the classroom, on a day where they're socially distanced still, but they're, they're up and they're active. And so we, we have actually a department meeting this week, and so we have the opportunity to brainstorm some other options for that.
Then my other question has to do with remote learning. I know that some of the remote families were very interested in coming back. I've heard a lot of feedback this weekend about that. And I think it would be helpful, can you expound a little bit on the ideas you're considering for remote, in terms of allowing or creating opportunities for optional involvement? And then I do think the survey about that is a great idea, but I want to be clear, the survey is about optional activities for remote.
Yes. So we've talked about this quite a bit as an administrative team, looking Yes. So we've talked about this quite a bit as an administrative team, looking both at the elementary level and at the 5A level. Again, it can be a little challenging because if we are, if a student is to move from the fully remote program, which has its own team and its own staff into the in-person program, that would mean an entirely different instructional team, entirely different classes, entirely different cohort of students they would be engaged with. So one of the things that we want to provide is an opportunity for that cohort to stay intact. But for some of those students, if they wish, to come in person. And so we've talked about coming in person for some small group work. We've talked about coming in person for more of the social-emotional, community-connection kinds of opportunities. We've talked about some of the specials that might provide a good opportunity for those students to come in person. And then we've also talked about some of the activities that happen, especially at the end of the school year, where we're, we're doing special events and making sure that our students have access to those opportunities as well. Those are just a few of the examples, Kelly, and I, I see Dana here with us as well. If either of you might be able to expand on that, that would be great.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we were looking at the, the social-emotional aspect specifically because of the, the absence from having that, that daily interaction with your peers, which is really important. But also keeping in mind that, you know, we have one quarter left of school and there, there are very strong relationships that have been built in these classrooms, in the remote classrooms. While they're distant, I have to say, having been in many of them, they're, in many of them, they're, they're, the way that the kids interact and the way that they have bonded with their teachers has been extraordinary. And so I, I fear that a mass disruption to that would, would break that down for those kids. And so we really want to make sure that we're keeping consistency with their academics and, and the community that they've built while offering enriching opportunities on top of that.
So my recollection of remote was that we committed to it, right? So we're not, that's what you're saying, we're not going to change it. So, but we're going to survey to see really what the interest is of the, I guess, the parents, right, who have kids in remote learning now, on, on what, what a change would be.
That, that's right. Yeah, that commitment really was both directions. The families committing and us committing to them to continue with that consistency. From many of our remote families, we've heard, one of the greatest benefits of the fully remote program is that it has provided consistency, predictability, that synchronous instruction on a daily basis. And so we want to make sure that we're not reducing those opportunities as we provide some options for families to explore in person, if they're comfortable doing so. Again, we don't want to mandate that, but make it, make it available if some families are interested in it.
If I, if you don't mind if I follow up on that. So it sort of begs the question, because I, I think on the board, it's a, we all think it's an unmitigated phenomenal thing to go back to school five days a week, right, for the, for most of the, for all the hybrid kids. But do we anticipate there's going to be pushback to want to go back to the hybrid schedule for certain parents and students? I actually, I was talking to my kids about, about going back to school and they just, they were, they were, they were not as excited as I was. The fairest way to say it.
I, I do expect that there will be some students in particular who have, have learned to really appreciate the benefits of this hybrid model. I think a few of those include that really small and intensive group work that is allowed in that 10 or 11-person group on those in-person days, offset by the flexibility of the more asynchronous work on the at-home days. So while we as adults think every movement toward greater in-person is, is wonderful, I think students and some of our teachers as well have found that they have been able to accomplish so much in that every-other-day model. More intensive, direct, individualized instruction in those in-person days, offset by some of that flexibility on those other days. So there may be some who are less excited about this move and there certainly will be others who are just thrilled. We've heard that from teachers, we've heard that from students and probably some parents too. The unfortunate reality is that we have to, and the board has to direct, a model for us to implement. We cannot do both at the same time because our teachers are not teaching synchronously to the in-person students and those at home. We want to make sure that our teachers, when they're teaching in person, have the full attention of the students who are physically there with them. And so that does make our model more individualized, but also a little more difficult to implement in terms of flexibility, as we've seen from some other districts that have simply been live-streaming from their classroom the whole year. There are some benefits of that in flexibility. There's also some, some downfalls. And we've heard a lot about those downfalls of the lack of direct connection between teachers and students in that kind of a model. So we do need direction from the board moving forward. And at that point, then that would be the in-person model for our 5A students. We don't need that, to be clear, we don't need that today, but we will need that direction on Monday at the board meeting. Kelly, did I summarize that well enough? I kind of.
Are there other questions from board members, Ms. Stone?
What does Monday look like in this model? Mondays, I guess, what do they look like?
In-person.
Okay, so the blue and the gold or the blue and white? It's not like Nutri-R where it's.
No.
Got it.
Now, the, the blue and the gold is only to manage creative arts, world language and PE. But every other class is just.
Got it. Okay.
Straight up, in-person. Yep.
Sternwaller?
A couple of things. First of all, I, I can't thank you enough. This is a Herculean effort and it's amazing what you guys have come up with in such a short period of time. So thank you for that. And also, I really appreciate the, the thinking behind the whole notion. It, it kind of turns it on its head to look at it from the standpoint of, for the remote learners, the, the kind of disruption or degradation of those groups versus, as President Fabe said, you know, I, we've, we've heard it from several families who, you know, made a decision and, and want to be in. And the consideration of, obviously the consideration of social-emotional well-being of all students is paramount, obviously. But one of the things I, I started thinking about while you were talking was, and I think, I think John, something John just said made me think about it, was what parents think versus what students think. And I know there are obviously some students who, you know, it's an extenuating circumstance. But I'd be very interested to poll students, number one, about how they feel, but not just how they feel, maybe some ideas that they can brainstorm for how they want to get together and how they want to be involved in the fourth quarter in terms of coming into school and meeting their peers. Do they want to meet with other peers? Do they want to meet with their group outside, you know, outside of school? In, you know, like, do they have ideas for that? Because the ideas that you've come up with might not be what they're thinking of. Or, you know, it might not be enough, or it might be just right, whatever. I just, I was just thinking, like, our version might not be what their version is. So that was one thing. And then the other question, I, this is a question. I think it's more to, to Kristen. The, I think you started to answer it, but I was just curious. The students with IEPs that are, you know, the consistency obviously is paramount for that group of children who are in learning strategies, classes, and adding in world language and creative arts now into the scheduled fourth quarter is going to be potentially really disruptive in that, in those schedules. That could be a very difficult transition. And is that something that you're going to be? I might, I might have just misunderstood how that.
Yeah, so the, the world language, creative arts, those periods have stayed the same. So it, oftentimes academic strategies comes in place of a world language or creative arts. We'll maintain the, their schedules so that they, for the least disruption possible. So that our GLADS are working right now with LBSs to take a look, take a deep dive into that to make sure that student schedules stay as consistent as possible.
They won't change that up too much?
No.
I mean, fourth quarter is throwing that in as kind of a.
No, we don't want, we don't want to totally disrupt their worlds. Don't worry.
Just curious about that. Okay, thank you very much.
First, I mean, many people have said it already, but I wanted to thank you for all the work that went into this. The presentation was straightforward, looked sensible. And I know what that means is that a lot of work went behind it because this is a very complicated thing. And if you couldn't have presented it simply, the fact that you could present it simply meant that you worked through a lot of problems and found creative solutions to a lot of issues. So I wanted to, to thank you and the team for that. I also heard some rumors that you may have had a couple of breakthroughs personally to come up with this plan. And I wanted to personally thank you for, for that, if those rumors were true. So again, thank you and the whole team for the work that was done on this. The, the presentation makes sense. That usually means the plan makes sense. And now the next step is implementing and, and I think everybody's excited about that. So thank you.
Board members have, yeah, Lisa?
I just want to see if I can summarize a little bit of what I've been hearing from both the community and the administration. So, right, so that the whole time in COVID, things change and we need to modify accordingly. And a lot of those times, we're doing a balancing act, right? And we're picking between options, none of which are like the best or ideal. And so I just want to propose or state that I think that when we think about this, the district I've always seen in this balancing act is trying to provide the highest quality educational experience it can for all students in this crazy time. At the same time, the district is trying to meet the needs of each student to kind of accomplish that the best it can and honors kind of both the individual child's needs and family preferences to the best of our abilities. And we're never going to meet everybody's needs and this is the case now, right? And I, what I hear the district has balanced or looked at in addition to those things is consistency for the student experience, the impacts on teaching and learning, connections to both the teachers and the cohorts, and maintaining the integrity of the remote program. And the way it's trying to balance those is through these other additional programs, saying, okay, how can we bring the kids in? How can we do additional programming? So I want to say that I know that you all have looked really hard at what you can do for the remote students. And I want to say you're adding yet another layer in addition to provide, in addition to providing two educational models. Now we're looking at adding on another range of options. So thank you for your creativity and constantly trying to do this balancing act. And, you know, I hope that when people in the community look at this, they understand the lens through which you are trying to still meet everyone's needs within the very real limitations and constraints and the values by which we're trying to operate.
Well said.
And I also want to say, I love Ellen's, first of all, please survey the families about the remote options, you know, or I guess enhancement is how I look at it. But then, Mr. Sternwaller, I loved your idea about surveying the kids. Because Mr. Caesarotti, to your point, Leilei is not excited about giving up the opportunity to go to school in her jamies. So.
Well, I think we've got our first idea for in-person then. All right. Any other comments? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Stone.
You know, I, I echo everything that President Fabe said and just, you know, kudos to the administrative team for pulling this together. I want to also thank our teachers. Because if you think about a year ago, how many times they've had to shift how they're teaching? There was what it looked like in the spring. There's what it looked like when we had the soft start in the fall. There's what it looked like later in the fall. There's what it's going to look like April 12th. And that's no small feat for them to continue to shift and pivot how they're delivering instruction. And I'm grateful for it.
All right. I think you have overwhelming support for the work that you've done. Obviously, we have, we'll, we'll hear more next Monday and we'll then make an option. One thing we didn't talk about a lot, but we can talk about on Monday is a little bit more on the timing that you mentioned. We'll point out that another benefit is that as people come back from spring break, there's a public health benefit to waiting a week or to having a week to, to transition into this. So we shouldn't forget about that. But other than that, I think that was an excellent update. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, one more question?
And I'm not sure if this is the time to ask it. What about saliva screening? I have a question about saliva screening. The, right now, it is not mandatory. When we go into the fourth quarter and we have more students, have we talked about or considered, like, Nutri-R making it mandatory for the students that are in-person to participate? Because the risk goes up for all the students and the faculty and, and staff, everyone. When you have more students in a small space. And as we, as you actually explained so well, the mitigation that we're doing right now is working and it's really working well. And we have explained in the past, all those kind of Swiss cheese layers work really, really well when we use them. But if we're only testing a certain percentage of the student body instead of the whole student body that's present, it just adds risk where it's not necessary. And I'm just going to say, my feeling about it is that if we're going to make this jump for everyone's safety, given variance and everything like that, my feeling is that we should also make a shift to requiring that everyone opt in. That is, that is choosing to be in-person. I think it's reasonable. I guess there's a cost, obviously, to our district. So I would have, I would ask Corey or, you know, Dr. Premuscoly, what that cost would be to the district. But I think even the cost would be worth it. I don't know what it is, but in terms of safety. I, I just think the saliva screening is just another layer. And if we don't have 100% participation, I just, I don't understand why we wouldn't require that. I mean, that's what Nutri-R did and it really makes a difference. So I just want to bring that up.
So currently, the saliva screening is scheduled to go through April 12th, so the second week through after spring break. And so we can certainly bring back some additional information for the board to consider. That certainly is an option that, that we can look at. The testing subcommittee of the metrics team has reviewed our experience data monthly and has brought forward a recommendation to the board. And their most recent recommendation was to go through April 12th based on our experience data. But we can certainly bring back some additional information. And if the board wishes to compel those in-person learners, we just would have to think about what do we do if a student chooses not to participate? Or a family chooses not to have their child participate. Slightly different from Nutri-R where they live-stream their classes. We don't do that from the in-person classrooms. So there would be an impact there for the students who either forgot to submit that week or, or simply choose not to participate in that. And then are they moving to the fully remote program? What are, what are the educational opportunities then for the students? So we can, we can certainly explore that.
Other questions?
Yeah, just a kind of a follow-up on that, just as a, a point out there. I, I think anytime we consider anything that's mandatory, that there's a lot of issues and burdens that apply to that. And that any, any proposal to, to do a mandatory pretty much anything, I would want to scrutinize very carefully.
Fair point. There's a lot more to talk about on, on that issue. There's a lot more to talk about on that issue, but let's put that off until when we have more information, because I think there's important information about the efficacy of the tests that we should consider too. So with that, I'm going to suggest that we move on to the 2021 winter assessment update. Thank you very much, Ms. Jackson.
So, in the past, Katie Lee will give this presentation, but in the past, the district usually shares assessment results in the fall. The report typically shares the prior year's end of school year data so that any state assessment results, like the IAR, which was formerly known as PAR, could be included. However, we have made some adjustments in the last year and a half to provide the board and our community with more regular updates on student assessment data. The board will recall that we are with testing three times a year. We want to make sure that those data are readily available to the board's review and to our community's review as well. So with appreciation to Katie Lee and her team for putting together these regular assessment reports now, we today turn our attention to the winter assessment update, and Katie will take the lead on providing the summary.
Thank you, Dr. Kremis Goli. And this is a mid-year progress supportive. One assessment is the NWA MAP. And this is that time of year, while we have ongoing conversations about data, that we are reporting after administration in the winter, our MAP results. I'd like to start, though, with a couple of informational updates. As Carrie mentioned, we do send home family reports, and typically that is in the spring. So prior to this year, our practice has been sending home summative reports to all families without having, you know, to request it. This year especially, since our experience in the last year and a half, we felt it was really important to be just more open and more transparent. So we've changed our practice this year. Where families are getting a report fall, winter, and spring without having to ask. In the past, they had to submit a request, and of course, we honored those. So with that being said, there was a family report that was generated by NWA. And it did not have the same level of information that our families really appreciated. So we've been in talks with NWA to talk about what is going to happen, what's the future. I've been having multiple meetings with them. And we are going to figure out a way that we can meet the need, the informational needs of our families and what they're used to, hoping that NWA will come with us along the way as they adjust their reports. But if not, then we will figure out a way to get that information to our families. I just wanted to explain that. In addition, as Carrie mentioned, we usually only do one fall assessment report. I think there's been maybe one year we shared spring officially in front of the board and do a public presentation. This year, we're doing all three again. And I think that's going to actually inform us of how we're going to move, you know, in the future. But we felt in the fall, it was very important to share, here's our baseline. Here's our fall-to-fall baseline. Here is where our students are starting with the interruption of last year's instruction. And then this winter is going to be a mid-year progress. And that's something that we've always reviewed as a district and the staff and administrators. However, presenting to you and to the public will be, this is the first time. And what we want to do is make sure that all of us are understanding this report in the same way. And this is our mid-year, it's a formative check. It's a mid-year progress check. It is a pit stop in our destination of spring, if you will. So if you think of this report as informing us and how to move forward or how we're doing along the way, that is the information that will be shared with you today. One other thing we noticed with the help of actually a parent, we looked really deeply into the fall assessment report charts. And there was one cell out of the two charts that was incorrect. So I wanted everyone to know that a corrected version has been posted under the November 16, 2020. There was a RIT score, a mean RIT score that was off. And so if anyone is interested, they could go there and they would see the corrected chart, and it was in math. The other update I'd like to share is the state mandated assessment. So we now have all of the guidance that we need at this point. So ISB guidance has been received because it is a state mandated assessment and concerns of any, like, testing anomalies. They are not allowing any remote administration. So we are in deep planning of how to bring all of our remote students into, in a safe way, into our schools and having them assess. And so there's, there will be more information following. And the planning is almost complete. So if anyone's wondering why you haven't heard anything yet, once it's finalized, there will be broader communication and a specific communication from the schools and even the classroom teachers. Okay, all right. Another piece of information that NWA shared with us is that they have re-normed their data. The norming, the last norming study was in 2015. And so this year, starting this year, all of the norms are based on 2020 norms. And I think it's very important to point out that the norm study used data from the years 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2018. I want to specifically point out that this is pre-pandemic, pre-COVID data. So when we are norming and comparing our students to how we are doing nationally, it is not based on any interrupted data. This year's data, it is really about the same normative data as if the school year was typical school years in the past. Okay, the standard is there. All right. Again, as you know, that fall-to-fall mid-year progress also shares with you any growth projections. So these growth targets, when we talk about whether our students have met their growth targets, we're talking about their growth targets from fall to winter. That is different than fall to spring. It is different from fall to fall. All of that data is provided to us by NWA, and it is fall to winter. Our administration window for the winter was January 20th to February 5th. And the same considerations for all of our learning models. The different models were taken into consideration when we administered. All right, so this is the cohort view charts, the mid-year progress check data. And we thought it might be good to still provide. So this is the cohort model on the table that we usually share in the assessment report, the written reports. And so they're here for anyone to review as well. And this one is for reading. But of course, today, I will show you a lot more specific data up close and in the graphic form. So what is our question right now? Our question right now, how are our District 39 students progressing so far this year? We wanted to show you an at-a-glance of the math mean RIT. So the 2018, 2019, 2020, 21 is shown here. But just graphically, we'd like for you to see that our students from second grade through eighth grade are growing. And the, the black bar is the national mean RIT comparison. So this is for math, and this is for reading. And I will break it down the way we typically do. So student achievement, mid-year progress check at the grade level views. I will use this one to explain all future slides that are similar. So each of the slides contains, the content area is math and then reading. And each of the colors represent a different set of second graders. So in the winter of 2018, the RIT score of 194 on the blue. And then purple, yellow, and green is our present day, winter 2021. I think you'll see that as far as achievement is concerned, where our students typically perform above grade level nationally, they are very consistent. And so we're very proud of that, too. This is third grade. Fourth grade. Grade. Sixth grade. Seventh grade. And eighth grade. So as you can see, just visually, if you do a comparison of how do we compare to past years of these, this grade level set of students, this year, we're performing exactly consistently. What we're looking for is any major inconsistencies, and then we would hypothesize as to why that's occurring. Okay, so now student growth has been a real focus for us. And a mid-year progress check at the grade level view demonstrates this. This is second grade for math and reading.
And Katie, can you remind us where you, where we try and be when it comes to the percentage of growth? Because I know 100% is not the target.
Yes, NWA, as far as growth is concerned, there, we would want to see our students between the 50%, 50% to 60% range. Is this third grade? Fifth? Sixth? And D.
Does somebody have like a radio on somewhere? Thank you.
Now, the, it's the intersection of both. So our achievement status as well as growth, what we provide is a stacked bar graph to show you the percentage of students at this mid-year check, where they fall. And the past couple of years has been also shared with you for a comparison point. This is second grade.
Pause just for a second there and let us, help us to, so the blue means, can you just take us through what each of those colors mean?
Oh, sure, sure. Let me start at the top with the red. That is the percentage of students that are low achievement, low growth. The yellow are the percentage of students high achievement, low growth. The green is low achievement, high growth. And the blue is high achievement, high growth.
So we're trying in particular to shrink the red for sure, but also wanting to see the high growth for all students increase.
So what we want to do is shrink the red and the yellow. Because our focus is on, we know that our achievement is good. We know that it, you know, shows above grade level nationally. However, we have been focused, our district has been focused on and zooming in on the growth aspect. And so we'd like to see a shrinkage of the yellow and the red. And this is for second grade reading. Third grade math. Great reading. Fourth grade math. Fifth grade math. Fifth grade reading. Sixth grade math. Sixth grade reading. Seventh grade math. Seventh grade reading. And finally, eighth grade math. And eighth grade reading. So there's definitely more inconsistencies, if you will, when it comes to growth. But overall, here are some celebrations that we could highlight for you. You know, District 39's student achievement has yielded consistent results to prior years. I think we would be concerned greatly if that was not true. And we've shown that that's consistent through the years. District 39's mean RIT is above grade level in almost every grade level. So knowing that our students are at the mean above grade level and beyond their own grade level, that also adjusts our thinking about, hey, how are we still on track? And we feel that we are. In most grades, District 39's growth has yielded consistent results to prior years. So in reading, I would like to highlight grades four, five, six, seven, and eight that were consistent. And in math, grades two, three, four, five, six, and eight. And also, our teachers have always been engaging, but they continue to engage in data reviews and discussions and collaborations where instructional approaches are discussed throughout the year. There's definitely opportunities, as you saw in some of the graphs. In a few grades, the District 39's growth has yielded inconsistent results. And ones that are going to just inform during this mid-year check what we need to do by the end of the school year. So in reading, we noticed at a fall-winter benchmark or progress check that in grades two and three, we need to look a little bit more and see how we can support those students as well as the teachers and try to analyze, where are we now in comparison to previous years? And then in math, it would be in seventh grade. For those who are, you know, at home or will be viewing, this is the first time we've done a committee of the whole presentation like this and felt that this information should be available to all families. So on the agenda, this, a PDF of this presentation is attached for anyone who's interested in, in looking at it. Right, so at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So thank you for this. This is so helpful to the way you present it. It's really valuable. In the past, you've described some of those teacher-based data discussions, and it was really helpful for me and illuminating. I wonder if you could describe that a little bit? Because I find that so reassuring to know how teachers and administrators are looking at these and adapting instructions.
Sure, I can, I can do more of that, that overview look. Because a lot of, aside from this district level view, what we do is our department, Tom Hunter, who is the coordinator who helps me with this, as well as I, would meet with the principals and share this information. We also, at times, provide smaller group sessions, what we call the collaboration meetings, whether it's elementary Friday early dismissal or not, or during the day for the older grades. It really, that one really varies. I think we're trying to fine-tune that piece. But the principals at their level will lead data meetings at either a staff meeting or it might be in smaller groups where they review their school-level data and they discuss any trends and patterns. I could also refer to my colleagues if they want to share more specifics there. But it is at a staff level, school-specific level. And then each of the teacher teams, whether it be grade-level teams for elementary or team teams, what multi-content areas at the 5-8 level, they need on a regular basis to talk about students. Now, knowing, keeping in mind that NWA MAP is one piece of the full story. So they talk about this score. They talk about other scores available. They talk about any classroom assignments that have been provided where they, you know, take in as feedback. So it's to paint a fuller picture of the, of the child. But this is definitely one piece that is part of the discussion so that people But this is definitely one piece that is part of the discussion so that people could see, here's a universal screener, if you will, to see how we're doing and measuring our progress in that way. Sure.
Other questions?
Thank, thank you. It was a good report, and I'm glad we're doing this in the Committee of the Whole. I'd like that to be considered for a normal process. I mean, not necessarily mid-year, but, but that we talk about this more often in Committee of the Whole so we can have a discussion instead of, board meetings tend to be presentations and less discussions, and this meeting is specifically for discussions. So, so I, I appreciate that and the, the presentation. A couple of points. Grade level, I, I know it, it's, it serves a purpose, but nobody moves to a MATH because we'll met schools are better than grade level. That, I mean, better than grade level is not a very high bar. And we need to find some measure that, that approaches, are we doing as good as we'd like to do or can we do better? And the fact that we're doing better than the state average is, is basically, it's, it's a, it's a, it's just basically stepping over a, a hair on the ground for us. We need to have something that, that we can strive for, that we can really push ourselves on. In the past, we've looked at some high-achieving schools. You know, I know Nutria has basically hidden the data for the other Nutria schools, but that was something, and I know test scores aren't the only thing. But saying that we're better than the state average while good and appropriate is just not sufficient. So I, I know it's, it's not easy, but we have, we have to find something that we can measure ourselves against. And, and that's just really not a, a good enough data point.
So I think, Frank, what you're, what you're alluding to then or suggesting is that we come up with a percentage, a different percentage, not, not just comparing to the, the state average, but for example, maybe the number of students performing above the 80th percentile nationally or the number of students, something like that, another way of looking at the metric that would give you a better sense of how our students are performing in the high achievement range?
Yeah, I, I mean, again, I mean, we, we know. I mean, I could tell you for sure that, that our kids do better than the state average. And I could tell you that we could do, we could have a really bad two or three years and our kids would do better than the state level. So it doesn't add enough value, what, to, to really know if we're, if we're doing well and, and hopefully doing better every year. I mean, I know it gets harder and harder as you get higher and higher, but, but our goal should still be that we do better every year. And in order to do that, we have to measure ourselves against better.
I, I think it's, it might be useful to do a little bit of a look back on that because I totally, I agree with that, and that is, you know, I have long been an advocate for the idea that we know that performance is highly correlated to the, the richness, for lack of a better word, of the local tax base. If you look across school districts everywhere, districts that have higher tax bases have higher performance levels. And my contention has always been, we get no credit for being in this community. The schools get no credit for that, right? We have to perform well, knowing already that we will have high performance levels because of the tax base we have, right? So that's where I have always been a proponent of saying, well, then let's look at growth. Not exclusively of performance, performance is important, too. But one of the things that I love about this report is that we're learning more and more about growth. Because what I would like personally for our goals to be centered around is how do we take each student and make sure they are growing more than what we would expect on average for a student with similar characteristics? If we can achieve that every year, the achievement will come. I'm not worried about the achievement if we're growing people. So one of the things that I found very interesting, and not to, not, not to usurp your time, but one of the things I found very interesting is that in looking at the data, we have uniformly high-performance scores, and they haven't gone down much even due to the pandemic. The growth scores, though, are much more variable, and they're much, they, they indicate much more interest, it's sort of interesting possibilities for actions that we can take, in my mind. Because it's pointing to challenges that we, that are maybe covered up by the high performance that is natural to a level, to a school district of this level of tax rate. So sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you totally, but I think that your, your comments are based on a long history that has led us to one solution being looking at growth.
Yeah, I, I agree. The, the growth numbers is where we can identify how to make improvement. I'm, I'm just saying, as, as a baseline, the, the guidelines of what we're shooting for should be something that, that's, that's a striving goal. So the, the growth is, is how we get better, and it's what we really need to focus on. But we shouldn't allow ourselves to say that we're better than the state average as being of, of much value. We should find something that is of value. So, so a lot, a lot of good data. I have one other thing, and I'd like to get feedback from the board. I have consistently asked for data being broken out. And I, it's not based on whims. We know that there's statistical data that says that in ELA in particular, boys test significantly different than girls. I consistently ask for the data to be broken out by boys and girls, and I am very disappointed that that did not happen today. So I would like the board to identify, is that important? That statistically, they're different? And if they say no, then I'll just bring it up independently. If the board says yes, then I'd like to see reports show that in the future. So board members, please identify whether that statistical difference is important or not.
Thoughts on that comment? On any comments? Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I, I think it's important. I, I'd like to see it. I mean, it's a great report, Katie. Sorry for all the critique here, but it's, it's opened up this, you know, more, right? We want more. We already have a good amount of data, so give us more. But I, I agree. I think it'd be good to see and worth looking at.
Other thoughts? I will say that, actually, Dr. Kremenskoli recognized early on that there are a number of different breakdowns where we see some statistical differences between identifiable groups. Frank has consistently pointed out the, the male/female difference on, on ELA scores in particular, but there are other differences, and I know that you, you've pointed them out, and you've been very sensitive to them. And I think that does sound like, to me, something that would be a good next step is to start figuring out, okay, what are some statistical differences between groups that we may need to handle as groups? Because there's another set of solutions, which is, oh, we see a statistical difference between, you know, two groups, whether it's by elementary school, by, by income level, by race, whatever it is, but that the best, but that there's actually a correlation with something else that's going on. And the best way to handle it is to identify individuals and handle them as individuals rather than groups. Both solutions are potentially effective, and we should make sure that we're addressing the right solution to the right problem. But I think if we were to start to look at some of the differences that we see that are sort of statistical group differences and start to target them, personally, I think that would be a great, great fodder for what we're going to do next, which is our strategy discussion and say, okay, how can we close some of these gaps that we're seeing? And male/female may well be one of them.
No, Mark, I think that your suggestion on how to address this is good. We have a data retreat coming up with a strategic plan, and I feel like that, a good place to broach how we slice and dice things further belongs there.
So I guess the, so, so let's make the, sorry.
And other people respond to, because you answered the question, and you didn't give the other board members a chance. And we specifically know that the data historically and consistently says, in ELA in particular, that there's a difference in that one group. And I don't want it diluted by, let's look at the long term and all the other groups. We know of one group in particular, and I'd like to see that reported. What Mark said is important for us long-term, but there's a specific difference, and it's been something that I've been consistently asking for. So I'm, I'm just not understanding why, so far, when I've asked for it, it just hasn't shown up.
John, while I wanted to say something.
I'm not sure if my answer is gonna satisfy Frank because I'm gonna draw off of something that was a part of the previous conversation that Mark said. And actually, in some ways, it kind of even further proves your point, Frank. You know, I, I agree with you about understanding the, understanding the basis for all of this, the, you know, kind of putting it in a, a larger perspective of, of where we stand. But you brought up comparing ourselves to, you know, like Nutria, you said, Nutria hides its, you know, the other districts' performance. And when you talk about that, you're talking more about achievement and not growth. And the growth model answers the question that you're asking, not just for your specific subset, but for every specific subset that exists within our district. And we have many specific subsets that are equally important to the one that you're speaking of. And the problem is, you cannot compare our district specifically, growth, the growth of our district and our students in our district to other districts because it's like comparing apples to oranges to many districts when other districts, for instance, are sending all of their, or are sending all of their special needs students to our district for a, a higher education because we can provide it and they can't. Because, you know, so if we have a disproportionate number of students that are receiving a particular type of education that we're providing, then it's gonna skew the, the numbers, you know, in terms of achievement necessarily, but not necessarily in terms of growth. That's just an example, but I'm just saying, so if, if we have more boys than girls, or that's, you know, to your, to your point, in our district, I don't know what the numbers are here. You know, we don't have control over how many boys enroll versus girls. It's gonna skew the numbers. Like, I don't know what that is, but the growth model answers that. And I agree with you, we need a deeper dive into it. That, that I agree on, and I agree with President Paves that, that, you know, at that meeting, that strategy meeting, to then look at each of those groups and then say, yes, these are the groups including your concern that we should take a look at. This is what we should look at. But it's not, one subset is not more important than another. They are all important.
Okay, but I, so wait, hang on just a second, right? Because I'm hearing two things, and I don't think that they're inconsistent with each other. So I want to make sure that we don't get ourselves into a knot over something that's not inconsistent. I believe what I'm hearing is that Frank is repeating a request, which he has absolutely consistently made for years, which is to see data broken out by male and female. And if I'm hearing your concrete request correctly, Frank, it's see this report with all the numbers, male versus female. Is that the right concrete request?
That, that would be a goal if the, if some of these numbers were broken out. And in fact, they used to be. So if more of these numbers were broken out by boy and girl, in particular, since we know that there's a statistical difference in the reading, that's a step. I know every one of these numbers, if they're broken out, I mean, sometimes it starts becoming daunting. But, but there, there is, there is a need to look at, in particular in ELA, because we know that there's a difference. And, and when I mentioned the, the, against the national norms, whatever, the, the matrix that we put together on growth was a really big step forward, and that is really the focus, and that's really important. Our growth numbers, again, we're starting from a high level, and I understand that, et cetera, but we broke it out by high achievers, high growth, and low achievers, low growth. So we're already normalizing for that a little bit. Our growth numbers are adequate compared to other schools. The, the growth numbers that other schools show are much more often above 50%. And that's fine. I'm not saying we're poor, but I'm not saying that we have reached the point to those growth numbers that we'd like them to be. When we look at these charts, something like 40% of our high achievers did not achieve growth or the expected growth. I mean, the bars are set up, but when you actually take the, the numbers and you put them together, it's 40, 45. You know, in some cases, it's more, a couple of cases, it's a little bit better, some cases worse. But 40% of our students in that category and in the lower category, I did the arithmetic too quick, but it looked like even less. It was more like, you know, 55% in some cases didn't achieve the growth that was expected. So I think that that quadrant is really, really useful, and it was a big step forward when we got to growth, and the fact that we're measuring that gives us the opportunity to have discussions. So I'm not deluding that. I'm saying, and that is the focus, but I'm saying that, that we have, we have to take into account other things. And I'll just stop there.
So, so just to be clear, though, I, because I, I think there's a concrete request here, which is to see this data broken out, male versus female. I think there is another concrete request, which is, I will call the Lisa Ellen request, which is, as we go into the data weekend or the data retreat, you know, start to look at some, you know, a number of different groups that may be separable and statistically different. Look especially at growth is what I think I'm hearing, if, if I'm hearing correctly, and start to address those, you know, come up with strategic plans to address those differences. So I hear that as two requests that are not inconsistent with each other, but are not the same request. In my, before I ask the administration whether that makes sense, let me just get the sense of the board. Is that what, am I hearing, am I reflecting correctly what you all are saying? Okay, I'm getting lots of nods, so that's what we're hearing from the board. And so Carrie, what do you think about those two requests?
So we can cut the data in whichever way the board collectively directs us to cut the data. We are happy to do that, but the board must speak with one voice and provide that direction to us. One way in which the board can do that is through the strategic planning process in identifying what are the targets you want us to specifically evaluate and aim for. Without that, that single direction from the board, it leaves us grabbing at cutting data any which way and unsure of what the actual voice of the board is, the vision of the board, the direction that the board hopes we take the district collectively. So I think those are all really critical factors that we must evaluate as we enter into the strategic plan. And again, that is the way through which the board is able to direct. These are the metrics and the thresholds we want you to pay most attention to. Because as, as Frank said, if we start looking at all the different ways we can examine data and the different groups that are most important to each and every one of you, it does become daunting. it does become daunting. And so it is really important, as we enter the strategic planning process, that we look at a number of different ways to monitor and measure our achievement and our growth, and that we settle on the few that are most important for us to really focus on as a district. We cannot do everything all the time. We must narrow our focus to that which is most important, most critical to the board. And we will then follow up accordingly. So I, I agree with Lisa's direction back to strategic planning being the place through which the board can provide that direction collectively.
And, and I think, yeah, I think that's right. And I think what I, at least the way I'm hearing it, it's we gotta look at male versus female to, to see what it looks like. We gotta look at this report on male versus female. That's a, that's a specific inconsistent request.
From Frank.
From Frank. And, and look, I find it interesting, too. I think, I think there's something there. So it's not just from Frank. I, I don't know where, John expressed support as well, so, you know, it's not just from Frank. It's from, you know, member, I haven't heard anybody reject that suggestion. So I would say it's from the board. The other piece is, you're, as you go into the data retreat, you're gonna be looking at differences that, that the administration believes are there. And you'll be surfacing the ones that you think are the key ones the board should, should focus on. And so, yes, the board will need to give you specific direction ultimately in the strategic plan. But I believe what I'm hearing is, the board wants to hear your recommendation coming out of looking at the data onto what those should be, where our focus should be. I hear a lot of growth, that's because I say it a lot, so that's probably why I hear a lot. But, you know, a lot of growth as well as achievement, and then other areas which you all identify from the data as being important. That, let me get a, just, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna set out expectations, because here's what we have on the table this month. The data retreat. And assembling all that data to be prepared for a multi-hour data retreat is a heavy lift. We are asking the administration to prepare and launch a return to full instruction for 5-8, for those in the hybrid program. And we are asking for additional programming for remote family. So I just wanna be super clear about what we're asking. Is the timing critical, that it has to be none now? And I wanna suggest that it, it doesn't, given the other three priorities right now. And Frank, I understand your frustration with not getting this report. But I'm trying to rank order for the administration, what comes first, second, and third. And I see three heavy lifts in the next month. And so I would suggest that the focus on data slicing and dicing is for the data retreat at this moment in time. And it's not to be disrespectful of you, Frank. It's, it's, it's just looking at the lay of the land and knowing that, like, people are already working crazy hours.
You think that the, I, I guess I had envisioned that the data slicing and dicing is part of the data retreat, which I actually think is, I, I do two dimensions, important and urgent. And I think they're all important. I actually think the data retreat is less urgent, but if they, if that's the, if that's the choice of date, yeah, if that's the choice of dates, that's fine. But if somebody said, oh, we had to put it off for a month, I personally would say, look, I wanna get it right. This is for a strategic plan, you know, if we can't do it. But that aside, I thought that the male versus female is part of the data slicing and dicing. That's sort of how I heard it, but I don't know if I'm hearing it wrong, or if people think that's a different topic.
You know the workload, and you know what all these asks entail, so I guess I look to you for.
Really, the question is, does the board direct us to bring back a disaggregated report by gender to present at the board meeting? Or are you asking us to incorporate it into the data retreat of the strategic planning effort?
I, what, personally, I, I'm happy having it as part of the data retreat and having that report come out in, in good time when we see it. But, but with the knowledge that this is not, I mean, Frank, I'm not, I don't wanna put words into your mouth, but this has been a consistent request from you. This is, I don't think that your request is, well, I wanna see it one time and then that's it. I think it's, I want this to be incorporated into the, the way we think about data. What do you think?
I, I understand that between now and Monday, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on. But if there's not a specific date, then I would be more than disappointed. So we need a specific date, not part of a big study. It doesn't have to be every single number, but I wanna know when we will have that data broken out. Not that it's part of a data study, and then we're gonna do a lot of analysis, which is all exceptionally good, and that there's some undefined date in the future when we're gonna have it. So if it's not gonna be Monday, then I would say the next committee of the whole, we need to see it. I need to see it, or I would be disappointed.
Okay, so again, I need the direction of the entire board, not, not just one member, but if the board wishes that we disaggregate the data by gender, we will do that and bring it back to the committee of the whole in April.
Amy.
So I, building off of what President Faes said, I'm concerned about us overloading the administration at a time when there is so much to do. I think adding the strategic plan at this time is a lot. I, I'm wary of making the most of that and also doing everything else we're doing to the best of our ability. I do believe what you're asking is important. I wanna look at it. I, I personally do not feel like that rises to the hierarchy of this moment. So do we set a date? Maybe it's end of year data, or, you know, whenever we know it's coming up next on our natural rotation. To me, I'd be comfortable waiting. I, I think about our role, and I don't know where this lies in terms of us setting your concerns. I, I don't know if gender disparity is a concern in the data. I feel like it's always important to look at the, how, different groups. Any gap is of concern to me. I do hope that that comes out in the data retreat, but I'm reluctant to put this at the top of your list for Monday, or even April, unless it is of the administration's concern. But I would love to have a date. So to me, I, personally, I'd be comfortable May, June, when it feels realistic to do it well and to do everything else we're doing well.
John, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask each board member's opinion. So John, where, where are you on the need for, need for a date and what that date should be for this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sympathetic with Frank. I think she's asked for it for a long time. So, but then again, I, I agree, I think prioritize, priority-wise, this is a tough one for it. So I would, I'd push to late April, May. I think that's realistic and reasonable.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's it.
I just wanted to jump back. So I was on the planning call for the strategic plan, which is part of what is on my mind, because I heard what's involved. And I don't know that, I didn't know all that this is going to ask of the district right now, to prepare for this strategic planning process. It's much more enormous than I had understood. And so that's part of, you know, my thinking, in terms of my comfort in pushing it back.
Okay. Ellen.
Two things. One, I just wanna thank you, Mark, for summarizing in a better way what I was trying to say to Frank. Frank, I admit no disrespect to you. I actually do know that you've been asking for this for a very long time and respect that, actually. And know that, you know, and do you think that this is important data? And then echoing what Amy just said is, once again, you know, every group is very important. But yes, you have been asking for this. And I, I do wanna see this data. I, I also, though, do agree that this is too much asked right immediately. That said, at our, at this meeting, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to discuss a, a date, you know, at the meeting, and to figure out a future date at which it's reasonable to promise Frank that, you know, with the administration, with Dr. Kremis Goli, that you feel that, that it is doable to be able to present this data. Right now, I think it's, it's not reasonable, a reasonable ask to, to do this right at this moment. There's just so much going on. But, but I do think that it's not unreasonable for Frank to ask for a date. So.
So I think what I'm hearing is, you are in support of a concrete date, but certainly not Monday, probably not this month, or, I, I don't know, but maybe May, June, as Amy suggested, is that, okay.
Yes.
Erin, where are you?
This is not what I want the district spending its resources and time on right now. I am, I'm comfortable with not having a date, as long as we know it's gonna fall under the umbrella of the strategic planning process. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. Lisa, where are you?
So I'm with Erin. I feel like the, there, there's so much on their plate that Amy described from the strategic plan. If anything, we can get Dr. Kremis Goli's input on when's reasonable, given everything she knows on her plate.
So you are, where are you on having a concrete date?
I don't need it, but I understand if there is a move to get one, that we ask Dr. Kremis Goli what is reasonable.
So Frank, it sounds to me like what we have is a number of people who feel like a concrete date is a reasonable ask. Not much support for a concrete date in, on Monday or in April. Maybe a, how about if we ask the administration to give us a concrete date by the end of the school year, that is reasonable for them to achieve, to have this data broken out, male, female? What do you think about that?
If, if I hadn't been asking for this data for over a year, and I understand there's always things that, extremely important things that come up, I would not be pushing hard for it now. I understand there's still a lot of other things that are important, but there's been a lot of other things that have been important for over a year. And eventually, this has to bubble to the top of the list. I completely understand that it would be unreasonable to ask for it for Monday. It sounds like there's a strong consensus and reason why it's, it's, it's a, a big ask to ask for it by the next committee of the whole. But I think it's important to have a specific date, either the May committee of the whole, or the June committee of the whole, and not to have it as an open-ended thing. So if one of those two dates were picked, I'd be, I'd be comfortable. If we leave it as a totally open-ended thing, then I'm not, and I, this is, that would be the same thing that's happened for the last 18 months, and I wouldn't be seeing progress, so.
So let me see if I can get consensus from the board for the administration for the following direction, which is by, you know, in the, in the next, let's say, well, actually, I, I think it should be reasonable to do by Monday, to say by next Monday, to come back to us and give us a date certain by which we will have this data broken out. And that date should be no later than the end of June. That, how, that a consensus? No? What would we, how would you amend that? Go ahead.
When is the next time we all meet to discuss strategic?
We meet on, we meet a week from today on Monday for, for the board meeting, for the regular board meeting. So that's why I was making that.
Regular board meeting. I'm talking about this, this, this statistic, this meeting.
The data retreat?
The data retreat.
It's not my understanding that the board meets as a whole to discuss. It will have two representatives who are part of a larger team to attend that data retreat. It is the administration who compiles the data. And I wish I could remember specifically, but just hearing what is involved, I believe it's three 45-minute presentations that they need to put together for April for this data retreat. So it is, to, to say it's enormous
I get it.
is a great understatement.
When's the next?
It's not the whole board, is my point.
When's the next committee of the whole?
Be the May one, so the second week in May or third.
Don't we have an April?
Oh, sorry.
So.
I'm a month ahead of my.
My, my suggestion, my suggestion would be at the next committee of the whole meeting, when we are all together, if on the agenda, we could ask Dr. Kremis Goli to discuss with your team, to possibly make suggestions about when you feel it's reasonable to, that you might be able to tackle this in the future and, and come, and come back to us with what you feel is, is reasonable. And then we can discuss it with Frank and the board and respond to you. I, I, I feel hesitant to tell Dr. Kremis Goli what the date should be, when we haven't heard what the scheduling is yet, and what is on their plate, and how much time everything's gonna take.
Well, I think, I, so I, I may have, maybe I've miscommunicated that. The, the way, the, the consensus I'm looking for is that the board directs Dr. Kremis Goli to come back to us with a date certain by which they will be able to present this broken-out data. That, that date, so there's two dates involved. There's the date that Dr. Kremis Goli comes back to us with the, with the final date, and there's the date on which the report will be given. The date on which the report will be given is no later than the end of June. The date on which Dr. Kremis Goli comes back to us, I suggested it first Monday. I think I'm hearing you say, let's give her until committee of the whole next time. Is that right?
And I'm saying, give her, yes, and then to tell us if it can even be done by the end of this school year. I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
What do other people?
Well, Dr. Kremis Goli, is that?
I guess what I'm trying to understand from the board is the direction you are providing to us about whose work this is. Ultimately, if you are asking us to bring to the data retreat of the strategic planning effort disaggregated data and allowing that team, empowering that team to determine which subsets of data are most important, then that's one path. The other path is that we continue to bring back to the board all these different individualized subsets of data. Either path is okay, but if the strategic planning team is empowered to determine what data sets are most important, then the board really needs to govern and empower that team to do that. If instead, the board wants to take on that work, then I'm not quite sure what the data retreat of the strategic plan group is going to, to be empowered, what decisions are they empowered to make? So we can, what I, what I was taking away from Frank's comments is that he wants to make sure that, as we look at the strategic plan, that we also consider the subsets of gender in determining which metrics are going to be most important to guide our future vision of the district. That is Frank's request, as I had understood it. If instead, we're coming back to the board to look at that, then I would want the board, and hope the board is also asking us to look at the other subsets that are at least equally important to the gender subset. And it is, to me, disappointing that this board isn't talking about the other subsets that are just as important and for whom we see significant gaps in achievement. I had understood that that was the call to bring to the strategic plan, to empower that team to make some decisions about which areas of focus will be most important for our district for the next three to four years.
Thank you for clarifying. Now I understand the sequence of events. I apologize, I have not been here for several months, so I'm catching up. So I, I guess, you know, I am a process person. You guys all know that by now. We're spending a lot of time splitting hairs over this. Just like Ms. Sternwiler said, let's look at safeguard testing. That discussion belongs in the Metrics Advisory Subcommittee, and they bring us a recommendation. It's the same thing here, whether you call it balcony or dance floor. We have spent tens of thousands of dollars to hire a strategic planning consultant. We have a process by which the administration is spending countless. We have a process by which the administration is spending countless hours gathering all kinds of data to present to a committee of stakeholders, administrators, teachers, parents. Like, like, you know, we've agreed on this process, and now we're saying, okay, but for this one subset. And Frank, I understand your frustration. But I also understand that district administration's time is limited, and we have a process by which all subgroups will be treated in the same way. And I think that's important, too. And I want to recommend that we really think about keeping the fidelity of the processes that we create, whether it's testing or data or anything else. Otherwise, we just, we, we make a lot of extra work and we don't say what we mean.
Amy.
I have a question. It might help all of us. In this data retreat, will subgroups of data be looked, is that a part of the data that will be looked at? Because I don't know, that, that level of detail was not part of the concept.
That is my understanding. And what I'm hearing clearly is that we want gender to be one of the subgroups that is examined. Traditionally, they, they look at racial and linguistic and, um, economic differences as really pronounced groups that may require attention within a district. But I'm hearing that gender is, is something, is another group that we would like the team to explore.
Yep.
Just say personally, if that is the case and we can agree upon that, I'm comfortable.
Go ahead.
For it to be in the data retreat, if, if that feels reasonable.
Ellen.
Now that I understand that, I agree as well. Um, and I would add to that, that I hope as part of that data, because of our district, the way it is set up, that also our special needs, um, group of students is also part of that because we have such a large, um, community in our district as well. So, but if it, if it's already a part of it, then yes, I, I agree, and I agree with President Page. So thank you.
Okay. We've spent a fair amount of time on this topic. I do not hear consensus for doing a separate report on male versus female. I do hear consensus for making sure that gender is a part of the data retreat work and, and looking at all of the subgroups within that. Certainly, if that turns out, you said that's your understanding of how they'll look at it. If it turns out that's not the case, then we'll need to know. But beyond that, I'm sorry, I just don't hear consensus on, on doing a full report. And I think it's time, I think we've spent appropriate time on this, and I think it's time to move on.
I have a tangential, quick, uh, other point then. If we have some representatives that are going to be at this data retreat from the board, what is the process of understanding what input from the board should go through those representatives? What is the process for those representatives reporting back from the data retreat? So that it's, the data is shared before and after with the entire board?
So I think that's a great segue.
Actually, I just want to say, we are taking a five-minute break.
Let's do it. And when we come back, we'll be talking about the District 39 strategic planning process. And I think that question can be answered within that subject. All right, let's take it. To go to the District 39 strategic planning topic, moving on from winter assessment. Great. Let's go ahead and do that. Dr. Kremis Goli.
Thank you. Uh, very timely, in fact, and connected to the last discussion. Uh, so the district is eager to launch its strategic planning engagement effort after spring break. The board will recall, we planned and began to launch this last March, right as the pandemic was also launching itself upon us. Um, and at that point, the decision was made to delay the effort until this year. And so we are essentially following the same process as was set forth a year ago and with some minor modifications to accommodate the pandemic limitations of in-person meetings. The, the, a couple of things that remain true. One is we want this to be a broad-based community engagement effort through which all stakeholders have the opportunity to weigh in on that which is most important to the district. The board has chosen a, an organization to help lead this. The CEC will lead it, along with empowering the CRC to help guide those engagement efforts to ensure that our future vision, that long-term strategic plan, which is a three-to-four-year plan that will identify the goals and the focus areas of the district, is really informed by the community at large, including each representative group. So that includes the board. It includes the community, parents, non, non-parents, community members, students, staff, teachers, administrators, all coming to the table together to effectively evaluate all of the data that's available within our district right now, all of the wishes and dreams of our district, and then to together put forward, these are the most important areas for us to invest our resources, our time and our effort over the next three to four years to really help us reach that next pinnacle of accomplishment as a district. And so as part of that, um, there are two elements that I want to bring to the board's attention. First of all, the first orientation meeting was originally scheduled for April 12th. As we've heard this morning, we are hoping that April 12th is the launch date for our AB merger at the 5-8 campus. And so we're thinking that may not be the best date to launch this other really tremendous effort of the district. So we're hoping to push that date back by, by a week, essentially, to the April 20th date that had already been reserved. So essentially, we're just pushing it back a week to allow for this new and really important endeavor of the district, the merger at the 5-8 campus. Secondly, the board will need to identify two representatives who will sit on the strategic planning team. That team is really charged with the responsibility of evaluating all of the data that's available to the district, of helping to set the vision, and of receiving feedback from the community at large, including other board members, including community members, including staff and students, and all who have a stake in our district, and helping to set that vision. The board's responsibility is empowering that group to do that work and then eventually approving the plan that is brought forward by that group. Along that journey, the board has two seats at the table. So two representatives from the board are representing the board on the strategic planning team, as it has been designed through the CEC process. So the board needs to select those two people to serve. I think the board has been provided with the dates of those events. We ask that the two people you select are able to attend regularly. This is not an event where you can substitute in and out. This is, uh, some, there are 10 meetings, each meeting lasting two hours from four to six, from, uh, beginning on April 20th and lasting through June 21st.
Thank you. And our traditional method for selecting members to do that is that the, uh, is that the president selects those members. And so, um, I think that's, that's probably, I think you've selected the, the people.
Yeah, it'll be myself and Ms. Polley.
Okay, great. So as we, so as we go through that process, what should the board expect in terms of updates along the way, if any, before we get to the end?
I would expect those two representatives to continuously update the board. The committee of the whole is the likely venue for doing that. But there will be those updates happening. The other thing that is part of this effort is that throughout the process, there will be drafts of plans that are sent out for the board's review, but also for the community's review and input. And so as those markers happen, the community will have the opportunity to review and provide input on the work of the team, as will the board.
Any other questions on the, or any questions on the District 39 strategic planning process? All right, I'm not seeing any. Thank you for that update. And I think that takes us to the end of the strategy items for today.
Thank you. So now we are going to move to public comment. So public comments will be accepted in person or remotely in real time via Zoom. And if you are going to give your comments via Zoom, we would request that your camera is on. Are there any community members present who wish to speak? Please state your name, your community residence, and you have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Dr. Diane Schonzenbach, a resident of Willmett and a parent of an eighth-grade student in the district. I'm a professor at Northwestern, and I publish multiple peer-reviewed articles studying test scores. I'm also an elected member of the National Academy of Education. I come today to voice concerns about our recent performance and also the selected information that's being released to the board and to parents. Uh, as was discussed in the committee of the whole, of course, it's absurd to compare us to national averages. These numbers can easily be benchmarked and separated across schools. And so I'm going to present you information that I received through a Freedom of Information Act request. Now, as Frank Panzika and Mark Steen asked, the MAPS test scores also provide summary measures of how our student learning growth compares to similar high-achieving schools across the nation. Here, we do not fare well, and I suggest this is what you start to monitor. Let's take fourth grade math and consider growth from fall to fall. Ramona's growth over the last year was excellent at the 87th percentile compared to similar schools. Central's was right at the national average at the 47th percentile. Harper's was poor at the 16th percentile, and Mackenzie's was at the first percentile compared to similar schools. But that information was not conveyed to the board. Now, this year, from fall to winter, we would absolutely expect performance to decline due to COVID. But since the benchmarks haven't changed, we can see how much our students have lost. From fall to winter, fourth graders at Central had their math scores grow at the 16th percentile compared to similar schools. At Mackenzie, it was the seventh percentile. At Harper, which currently has a grade schools rating of six on a scale from one to 10, it was the fourth percentile. And at Ramona, it was the first percentile. These are the numbers that were just characterized to the board as being on track.
Thank you. Are there other community members who wish to speak?
Good morning. I'm Dave Lundey. I'm lonely. I hate this. I miss my friends. I can't sleep. I'm sad. And of course, the great catch-all upon which every one of us agrees, COVID sucks. Headaches, stomach aches, anxiety, weight gain, classic signs of depression. These are just some of what we hear and see every day from our remote learner, who's a fifth grader at Highcrest. I come here today as a parent in pain, hoping and praying that this district can, now that teachers, administrators, and community members are increasingly vaccinated, find ways to offer more in-person opportunities for remote learners. I want to be clear. I think this district has done a wonderful job putting together a robust program for remote learners. For those of us who have a person at home for whom exposure to COVID would create a major health challenge, the Enhanced Remote Program has been a godsend. And I want to commend this board and this district for making this program as wonderful and successful as possible. When we were asked to commit to remote or hybrid for the spring, it was November. Cases, hospitalizations, and deaths were skyrocketing to multiples of the worst of the spring 2020 period. While we hope we, that eventually the district would come up with some type of evolution of the remote program with more in-person opportunities once the pandemic abated in the spring, we had to make a binary decision that covered the worst of the worst with double-digit positivity and excessive community spread. We chose remote. But like so much in life, things change. And we would expect the district to prioritize adapting to those changes, not just for those in hybrid, which we heard so much about today, but for those in remote as well. I'm not saying you need to provide the opportunity for full reintegration. I recognize that may not be possible logistically. We know these challenges you are confronting with are enormous, and we appreciate all the hard work you've put into it. But as the president, the CDC, the governor, the neighboring districts have all made clear, getting kids back into the classroom as much as possible and as soon as possible must be the top priority. There simply has to be something you can do to provide opportunities to bring remote kids back in person. And as so, as you consider increasing these opportunities for hybrid students, I would ask you, no, I would beg you to prioritize ways of decreasing the isolation for kids like mine as well. Our kids are suffering. And we know what we're asking is not easy, but we also know that this district is capable of meeting this moment and easing, easing the suffering for our children. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there others who'd like to make comments? Please come forward. Monty, do we have any community members registered that wish to address the board online?
Yeah, we do. We have two that have raised their hand. So first, we'll start with Emily. I'm going to move you over into the meeting. Then go ahead and turn on your video and unmute your mic.
My name is Emily Abraham. I am the mother of a fully remote fifth grader at Highcrest. I want to begin by thanking each of you for serving on the administration or the Board of Education for District 39. I recognize that this has been an extraordinarily difficult year, not just in your role as board members during the pandemic, but also in your personal lives. I'm deeply appreciative of your time, energy, and thoughtfulness to keep everyone safe, to continue education as well as possible. I'm here to say that I am earnestly concerned about the mental health and well-being of the children who have been learning remotely for such an extended period. My daughter has experienced intense loneliness. She has a deep need for in-person human connection. She feels terribly isolated, and she has not been able to engage very well during her classes on Zoom. And we were asked to make our selection for the third and fourth quarters. COVID positivity rates were rising rapidly. Businesses were closing, and the governor had recently made a statement urging people to stay home as much as possible. We carefully weighed the pros and cons, and based on the information that was available at that time, we made the best decision we could for our family. Now, thankfully, there is new vastly different data and hope on the horizon. COVID positivity rates are steadily decreasing, and more and more adults are getting vaccinated every day. It is time to get our children back to school. I request that, as you consider the possibility of increasing in-person instruction, you give the same consideration to students who have been fully remote as to those who have been hybrid. Please survey remote families and offer fully remote students the opportunity to have some degree of in-person learning. Our children are suffering. It is heartbreaking to watch their despair every day. We must all work together to alleviate their suffering and facilitate the healing process. Thank you again for all you are doing for the students of District 39. And thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And Jen, I'm going to bring you into the meeting.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm in my car. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jen Jobrak, and I live in the Mackenzie area of Willmett. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you this morning. I'm grateful to the outstanding staff of District 39, and I relied heavily on the insights of Kelly Jackson and Katie Lee. of Kelly Jackson and Katie Lee last August as we deliberated whether to send our son to fifth grade in person. After these conversations, we chose Enhanced Remote, or I'll say ER to abbreviate, hoping it would anchor our son in predictable learning in an unpredictable time. Since we could make the ER schedule work due to my work schedule and knowing that the alternative was two days per week at High Crest, we chose ER to minimize our risk. We were thankful, very thankful for this offering. An added benefit was knowing we were helping keep teachers safe and reduce building occupancy. In November, we again chose ER for the spring as the news was a buzz about variant strains, post-holiday case surges, and an eventual vaccine rollout that seemed like a mirage. And again, with the knowledge that the alternative would be two days a week in the building. What we did not anticipate is what a toll that remote learning has taken on our fifth grader, despite having wonderful folks like Jill Gantavnik, Catherine Fox, Carly Gordon, among others. We have seen significant declines in our son's academic and communication skills and a growing level of depression, sadness, anger, and loneliness that Zoom lunches or occasional outside gatherings with friends cannot fix. Remote learning has been a mixed bag and we have been stuck between a rock and a hard place trying to find solutions for our son. Thankfully, the data are changing, as has been widely discussed this morning. Illinois' vaccination pace is among the nation's speediest. Positivity rates locally and statewide are down. Teachers and administrators are increasingly vaccinated. Nearly every District 39 stakeholder, including this board, parents of hybrid students, teachers and administrators, may have an opportunity to expand in-person learning due to these new circumstances. Everyone seems to get the opportunity to adjust and adapt, but not families who chose remote learning. We chose based on the data available in November. And our very decision to keep our kids home made the hybrid model possible. We have not been included in any communication about expanded in-person schedules. With a vacuum of information, we are left to surmise that the district is focused on improving in-person learning for hybrid students, but leaving remote students behind. You currently have no idea what the demand for in-person options would be we pay for and fully participate in during normal years. The district must act with equity and fairness by ensuring that plans to expand in-person learning include remote families in some fashion, should they so choose. We know this is complicated.
I am sorry, we have a three-minute limit.
Okay, well, let me just say, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there others?
No, that's it.
Anybody else in person who wishes to speak? Thank you. Now we'll move to our one action item, which is the approval of summer school fees.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2021 student fees for the summer enrichment programs, academic courses, review and reinforcement in academic camp.
May I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries? No?
I think because it's fees, I think you have to do, I think you have to do roll call.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Well, we like this so much, we want to vote again.
Jonesy's ready?
Yes.
Frank Penzico?
Yes.
Amy Peeling?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Ellen Sternwiler?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes. Motion carries. Next is ongoing equity work of the board.
So just a quick update, a thank you to everybody on the board who participated in board development work with our consultant, Dr. Logan. And I'd ask if you have ideas about next steps to email me. He has asked for all the attendees to fill out an evaluation. It's a quick form, so I will send that to you. And then just a quick update that HEROES, the group that we've talked about in the past, healing everyday racism in our schools, is having a general meeting on Sunday, March 21st from two to four, if anybody is interested.
Great, and then I just want to give a quick update. I know the board saw an email from two students from the junior high requesting to talk with the board about culture and climate equity and inclusion. Ms. Polley and I did with Dr. Kremes Gole meet with those two women. They were incredibly impressive. They gave us both their perspective on what's been going on, as well as a list of recommendations for how we can do better. And as a result, we have extended an invitation for both of them to sit on the strategic planning committee so that they can infuse both their perspective and ideas as we both do the entire strategic plan, but in particular on, around equity and inclusion. Anything anybody wants to add on equity and inclusion? I just want to say really nice work to Mark and Amy in terms of the book discussion that we had. I, I found that incredibly educational and rewarding. Thank you again to all board members for giving up your Saturday morning. And now we'll go on to, is there any?
I have one question real quick.
Go ahead.
Do we expect a vote next Monday on the Juneteenth vote that we didn't, we didn't actually have?
Yes, we do expect that action item to be brought on the board.
Thank you.
And I would encourage you to repeat your introduction.
Aye.
I thought it was so great.
I'll do it if you got one.
Okay, other old business. New business. I hope she's ready.
Yeah, it, it, you know, I'm unbelievably ecstatic about getting the kids back in school. And I don't, I, I just, I'm reflecting on all the people that have, you know, I know we're not there yet and it's going to be hard, it's going to be harder than getting them out, getting them back in. But I wanted to throw out this idea that, that Metrics Advisory Team did such impressive work for such a long period of time that, that we, we should do some kind of, you know, I don't know, recognition for that group. You know, I was thinking acrylic trophies, things like that. But I just want to throw it out there and, because I, I don't think we do enough of that. You know, there's so many people in our community that help us run the community that, that one seemed like an especially significant group.
I'll just add on to that. So as a, as a member of the Metrics reopening group, I'm, I'm conflicted out of commenting on the specific suggestion, but I actually think it's a great idea. We have a lot of CRC members, we have a lot of other people who serve on, in ways that, you know, we could recognize better. And I think it's a, I think it's a terrific idea, Don.
Others? Lots of head nodding. Great. Do you want to lead the effort in figuring out what to do and who to do it for?
Yes.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, other new business. I love that. Okay, so seeing none, we, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel and negotiations.
And I think we've added legal.
Oh.
Litigation.
And legal.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Jonesy's ready?
Yes.
Frank Penzico?
Yes.
Amy Peeling?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Ellen Sternwiler?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes. Motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session and the time is 10:41.